First will be the Lynchburg Redevelopment Housing Authority Revenue Bond Financing for 1300 Campbell Avenue, and that'll go to Mr. Tom Martin.
Councilors, thank you for allowing me to be here. Each year, the Commonwealth of Virginia is allowed to issue a certain number of federally tax-exempt bonds, and these bonds are referred to as private activity bonds. The Code of Virginia reserves 14% of these bonds for local housing authorities to issue to qualified projects. The Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development is actually responsible for the private activity bonds and is responsible for actually issuing them. Astoria Housing Partners has requested that the Lynchburg Redevelopment Housing Authority to serve as the conduit for the $30 million of revenue bonds to finance the redevelopment of 1300 Campbell Avenue for up to 125 apartments. State code requires both the housing authority and the Lynchburg City Council to approve this transaction. So, the property at 1300 Campbell Avenue was formerly the Barker Jennings Building. It was oddly enough constructed in 1919 as the Martha Washington Dormitory for Jobber's overhaul. So, it was originally constructed as a residential building. It was rezoned to be for urban commercial to allow its conversion back to residential, however, that never transpired, and it sat vacant since 2009. Next slide, please. So, the proposal is to renovate the building into 120, up to 125 workforce housing units adhering to at least a 60% to 80% AMI. A studio apartment would rent at $930 a month. One bedrooms are $996 and two bedrooms is $1,195, and I believe that's about 15% below the market rate. There'd be a full-time general manager on site. They would provide security personnel, Wi-Fi, fitness center, playground, solar, and the project would be managed by SL Nosbaum Realty Company. They have offices in Virginia, Maryland, DC, and the Carolinas, and they manage up to 29,000 units. And I did a little research on this management company, albeit on Google. I looked at some other projects, and I was actually pleased to find that the majority of the reviews on them from their tenants were very positive. And the one thing that impressed me about them is that they also were very punctual in their replies in trying to fix whatever their residents' concerns were. So, moving on, the Lynchburg Redevelopment Authority Board has approved the issuance of these bonds. There's absolutely no financial obligation to the city of Lynchburg or the housing authority. What the housing authority gets out of being the conduit for it is a 1% administrative fee, which on $30 million worth of bonds is about $30,000 if my math is correct, and the project would meet the requirements of a qualified residential project in providing affordable housing. We have Mr. Hall here with Astoria, who'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them, but this will be on your general business agenda this evening.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hall? Mr. Martin?
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Yes, I do sit on the housing authority board now. So, I've had about two meetings. I missed the one last week because I was out of town. But again, when the project came up, my first meeting, I remember from another group that had that property, the same group that did, I think Grace Lodge, but then I think they, whenever a situation happened, they sold it to the other group. So, I was wondering what was happening, what could be the city for so long, and the group hadn't done anything. So, I'm glad to see something is not happening. Any of these abandoned structures were eyesores, so I'm glad to see someone taking them over and to renovate them. So, I'm glad to see this company step up and do something with this property. We had previously talked to the neighbors about the other agency that was coming to do some lawsuit of the day nature. So, they had, you know, sort of mixed emotions, but they did want to see something happen there for that property that's just been sitting there for so long. So, again, they're mostly were in favor of that, but I'm just glad to see someone now stepping up and renovating that property. Thank you.
Parking to the side.
There's also parking behind the building, and all of that was looked at as part of the rezoning process. So, they do, if I recall, they have ample parking for the project.
Does anybody have any questions? Was it Mr.?
Paul.
Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall. I think it'd be great just to have you come up and introduce yourself and just speak to the project briefly.
I've lived in Virginia for 35 years. I'm also partner in a property in Newport News, a waverin' place, 151 units. So, this is my second apartment project. Same type of structure, except that this, unlike the one in Newport News, is a historic, certified historic structure. So, you should know that. From an architectural standpoint, we've had to work with Virginia's state historic preservation office, SHOPO, to ensure that all of the improvements we do to the building are, keep it in the context and the period in which it was constructed and the construction materials. We're replacing some of the metal in the back of the building with brick and other materials that will give the entire building a sense of completeness and a feeling of the way it was when it was built. To Tom's point, 120 units is what we've designed. We're spending a lot of money on the building. This is about a $50 million renovation. So, even though it's targeted to be workforce housing and affordable, this will be a Class A finished building. We're going to spend, you know, almost $400,000 a unit on this building. So, these will be very, very nice units. Parking, to your point, we have 96 parking stalls around the building, and of course, we have the bus stop near the building. So, look, it's going to be, I think, a fabulous project for everybody. We're really excited about it. I have my financing commitment from PIMCO to buy these bonds, and you know, PIMCO's a well-known player on the tax exempt and conventional bond market. Boston Capital is their administrative agent, so they'll be servicing the bonds and doing the inspections during the construction period. I'm meeting them at the building right after this meeting, and we've got our tax credits all in place. We've walked this through the National Park Service. It's been designated now on the National Registry as certified historic structure. So, you know, we're going to equitize through those tax credits and the Section 42 credits. The unique part about this is when we're done with a $50 million renovation, the long-term debt is only $10 million. So, very safe, right? We're going to all sleep at night. There's not going to be stress here. We're going to be able to pay for security. We're going to be able to pay for the things that you need to pay for to have the building be a success. So, we're excited about it, and we appreciate you considering the supporting these bonds.
The only question I have is, is there certain qualifications for people to be able to?
Yeah. So, we have to average in the building, the overall tenancy at 60% AMI, and that generally represents, Tom hit it right on the nail, about a 15% discount to the marketplace. We can lease to people up to 80% of AMI, but I have to then turn around and lease to somebody around 50% AMI to keep us in that. So, look, this will be a great building where someone who just is struggling to pay rent in Lynchburg can get an affordable unit that's comfortable from an income standpoint, and it'll be a first-class building.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
I don't have any more questions. Anybody else have any more questions?
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
So, move.
I guess I'll second it.
And call a vote, Dr. Wilder?
Aye.
And I'll say aye. So, we'll move to?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is authorization to purchase the bookmobile. Welcome, Ms. Blair.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Dr. Wilder, good afternoon. In celebration of the library's 60th anniversary that's coming next year, the Friends of the Lynchburg Public Library has launched a capital campaign to acquire the library's first bookmobile. The Friends nonprofit organization has received donations from several local corporate and foundation donors, as well as over 60 individual donors in the community. The bookmobile will operate just like a library branch. It will visit all city wards, including nursing homes, daycares, apartment complexes, and under-resourced neighborhoods. In conversations with finance, this is treated just like a grant. We are therefore asking you to recommend appropriation of these funds to purchase the bookmobile, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. You have any questions, Dr. Wilder?
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. My problem, my computer, I couldn't remember the package I was running today. Does that cover, the grants cover the total cost of the project?
Yes, sir. Their capital campaign is a goal of $300,000. They need $278,000 to purchase, and they have that secured.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Well, it shows how we have a caring community, and we stress the importance of reading to our children. We also see, when you look at, if you don't read by the third grade or whatever case may be, you fall so far behind, and it staggers after that. So, anything we can do to our community to get persons to read more books and get them excited about learning is important. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilder.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
I don't have anything, and I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up will be Fire Chief Greg Wormser for the 2025 Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services Rescue Squad Assistance Fund Grant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Wilder. We were successful at receiving an award for a Rescue Squad Assistance Fund Grant that we had previously come to you back in February of this year. This grant is to purchase a new LifePak 35 cardiac monitor along with a mediramp system to assist us with moving bariatric patients on our bariatric stretcher in and out of the ambulance that it is assigned to. Hard for me to say. This is a 50-50 match, and so our responsibility out of the general fund for the fire department budget is $35,516. And with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Dr. Wilder, you have any questions?
And was that, so it was a match, so we had to match $35,000?
Well, the total grant is for $71,032, so we have to come up with 50% of that, and we will do that out of the general fund fire department budget.
So, it's already allocated in our general fund balance?
Yes, sir.
General balance. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
The dollars is already there.
That's correct. Yes, the dollars are there for sure.
All we've got to do is approve.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next up, we're going to have the police chief, and this will be the FY2026 DMV Highway Safety Speed Grant. Welcome, Chief Edwards.
Mr. Mayor Taylor, Councilman Wilder. Lynchburg Police Department has been awarded funding through DMV Highway Safety Grant Program. This is the selective enforcement police traffic services in the amount of $30,450 to support targeted speed enforcement activities and the acquisition of radar and LiDAR equipment. This investment enhances LPD's efforts to promote roadway safety, reduce speed-related crashes, and improve enforcement efficiency across the city. $15,050 will go toward the overtime costs, $12,000 toward the purchase of radar units, and $3,400 toward LiDAR units. The granting agreement includes an in-kind match of $15,225, which will be met through the department's fuel and vehicle maintenance services budget. And additionally, the grant excludes reimbursement of $1,121 in Medicare and FICA benefit costs associated with the approved overtime. Both the in-kind match and the FICA expenses are available for transfer from the FY2026 Police Department General Fund budget to fully support the program's implementation.
Thank you, Chief. Dr. Wilder, you have any questions?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
All right. I don't have any questions either. So, now you're using radar and LiDAR?
Yes, sir.
Because that doesn't help people using radar detectors, though.
I'm sorry.
That doesn't help people using radar detectors, though.
No, sir.
Fantastic. All right.
Thank you.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That is perfect. Next up, we also have Chief Edwards again for the FY2026 DMV Highway Safety Alcohol Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, and Dr. Wilder. Lynchburg Police Department has been awarded funding through the DMV Highway Safety Grant Program. This is the selective enforcement alcohol, which provides $14,070 to support DUI enforcement activities, alcohol testing equipment, and annual DMV grant-related training. This investment enhances LPD's capacity to promote roadway safety, reduce impaired driving incidents, and strengthen enforcement and prevention efforts within Lynchburg community. Through this award, LPD will acquire critical alcohol testing equipment and fund dedicated DUI enforcement initiatives designed to deter impaired driving and protect the public from alcohol-related crashes. The grant agreement includes an in-kind match of $7,035, which will be met through the department's fuel and vehicle maintenance services budget. The grant also excludes reimbursement of $961 in Medicare and FICA benefit costs. Both the in-kind match and FICA expenses are available to transfer from the FY2026 Police Department General Fund budget. And so, $12,900 will go toward overtime costs, $800 toward approved Virginia Highway Safety Office training, and $370 will be used to calibrate the PBTs, the preliminary breath tests.
Thank you, Chief. Do you have any questions, Dr. Wilder?
Just thank you for the department's fire, the police department as well, search for additional grants to supplement the income that we have in our city. Those things are so crucial to the success of our program. So, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wilder.
Coming up with a solution to impaired marijuana smoker drought.
It's a challenge, you know, with the decriminalization efforts with marijuana, and on the negative side of that is the impaired driving, and we certainly, as part of this, is DUI and DUID, which is DUI drug enforcement as well. But it's a challenge, and with the DUID, actually, we're required to have a blood test drawn with that. So, yes, continuing to educate and try to, education and enforcement, you know, a balance of that, but it's a challenge.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. That was actually the question that I had, so I don't have any questions, but appreciate the work and what you guys are trying to do. I know it's not easy with the decriminalization efforts, but I do think that we need to keep people who are impaired by marijuana off the roads.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate the work you guys are doing. All right. I don't have any further. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Great on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Next up, we have Ms. Mel Walker with the Public Hearing in Consideration of Reprogram and Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
Good afternoon, Councilmember, Mission Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Mayor Taylor and Dr. Wilder. The community development staff is requesting that funds be reprogrammed from fiscal year '26, the program year '25, Diamond Hill Neighborhood Plan, Dumberk Community Schoolyard, Phase II improvements, to program year '22, fiscal year '23, Diamond Hill Neighborhood Plan and Improvement Project for the addition of a tree lawn on the 1200 block of Pierce Street with the installation of new curb and gutter and accessible ramps. The Pierce Street tree lawn bids were received for construction costs, and they came in much higher than anticipated due to the national increase in construction cost. In order to complete this project, within the bid received, an additional $17,110 is needed for the CDBG project. Next slide. Here you can see the block on Pierce Street of where the project is at. And then, next slide. Here's just the plan and the things that are going to be done with the project. Next slide. And it's our recommended action that City Council conduct the public hearing tonight and adopt the recommendation of reallocating the funds to the two program years, from one program year to the other. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Chairman, of course, the public hearing. Sure. Dr. Rawlins, do you have any questions?
Thank you for the information. Really appreciate it. I sit on the CDBG review team as well. Those funds that come in receive such great community support because the community members are part of the project. So, I love to see where the citizens have a say in how those funds are spent. So, these are projects that approved, especially the Diamond Hill Plan, with over several reviews for the community members, stakeholders, partners. It was such a thorough process. So, thank you for that, and I'm glad to see the progress continue on, that we have the resources already to do this. Thank you.
And I will just add that I did consult with the Community Development Advisory Committee about this, and they all concurred with that, with this recommendation.
Sure. Mayor Taylor? So, when I look at this, it really just kind of looks like we're just moving some funds from one program year to the other. Is that really all we're doing?
Correct.
So, there's really no real fiscal impact, so to speak, or load?
The only fiscal impact is that you're reducing the fiscal year '26 project funds for the Diamond Hill Neighborhood Project that they're working on for the schoolyard. But again, they can come back next year through the process and get that money back.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'll make a motion to approve.
We have here tonight, so.
It's a motion. You don't need a recommendation for public hearings? All right. No action required.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up will be CFO Donna Witt, FY '26 General Fund Reserve for Contingencies Update.
Is the $25,000 for the Central Virginia Alliance for Community Living, that second vote is tonight as part of the general business, but with the understanding that we'll take it from here now and put it back at the end of the fiscal year if that's appropriate at that time.
So, I think the motion that was made and approved for that was that we actually top it back off once we get all of our finalized numbers from the unassigned fund balance from the previous fiscal year.
Correct.
So, we'll be putting, we don't have to wait till the end of the fiscal year for that, correct?
Um, no, we can probably do that maybe January.
That's what I was.
Yeah, we'll look at that in January.
Got it. That was the plan. So, does anybody have any questions about that? All right. Thank you. And then, next will be the monthly revenue collections update, also from this.
Thank you for that, because I was thinking it was going to be this year in funds the way we did the others, so thank you for keeping us. The revenue collections. Unfortunately, we're at flat, pretty much. Our sales tax, I mean, I don't know how you get any flatter than $3,982 compared to budget. So, I'm just thankful we're meeting budget. Our electric, we're up about $31,000 over the two months, which is pretty normal. August is usually a really hot month. This year, I think we did have some hot days in August, but it seems like they were hotter in September, if I remember correctly, so we might be up again for September. Meals tax, we're right there with $83,000 above budget, which is putting us right in line with where we are, and then up slightly compared to '25, which we want to be because we did not meet our revenue projections for meals tax for '25. Lodging tax, surprising, we're down for August, but in working with economic development, last year in August, we had the Disc Golf World Championships, which were in September this year.
Got it.
Or were they October? It just went. So, and they weren't the Worlds, they were the professional. So, we had that income come in in a different month, so I'm hoping these tick back up over September and October. But August, for that reason, there weren't near as many Airbnbs rented out, because that's where a lot of those players bring in their whole team, and they'll rent out a house because they're here for usually two weeks. So, I'm hoping that ticks back up since we did have that big tournament. And then, our amusement tax, we're right where we thought we'd be, so it's flat as well. So, flat is good. We'll take it.
Questions, Dr. Rawlins?
Thanks for the information. Appreciate it.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Thank you for that information. Next up, we will have roll call. Dr. Rawlins?
No items.
Mayor Taylor?
No items.
Couple things. Thank you. Couple things. First thing is, there were some emails going back and forth, and I just wanted to confirm this from our September 30th, the September 30th response, where I was asking about exceptions to policy for the travel cards.
Oh.
And it said that you weren't aware of any exceptions that have been made.
I'm not.
So, I'm assuming that there's no records in writing of any exceptions.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That as far as I know.
Excellent. Thank you. And then, I think, I think that's all that I've got. Glad we got that situated with the unassigned fund balance portion of that motion that we could clarify.
Okay, yeah. Thank you for that. I'll take care of that in January.
And then, actually, there's one other thing. Do we have minutes for these meetings we're supposed to be bringing?
Um, we don't.
Previously, they did, right?
Well, we've done notes. We don't do minutes. They typically just reflect the vote.
Okay.
So, they're not full minutes, is the way that we've always done.
Is there something that we should be approving?
Um.
That's just a question that I had.
And we get, at one point, we did, and then, then it was decided we weren't going to provide them because we didn't really vote on them or anything, but we can absolutely provide this.
I think that would probably be a good thing, just to make sure.
Okay.
I'm not too concerned about it, but I do think just to have those records is important.
Okay.
But that's all that I have, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing and appreciate the work you put into this. And the next Finance Committee meeting will be Tuesday, December 9th, at 3:00 PM, so there will be no Finance Committee meeting in November.
Correct.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.